Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Labor Counsel.
Thank you so much, Stephanie Summerold-Dumas, President of the Board. We have a couple items on here, but before I get started, I'd like to say something about our reporter, Mariel Carbone is from WCPO, this is her last day, and we just want to wish her well, and we're glad that we were able to, she's a little embarrassed over there, but I wanted to mention it because you've done a great job, so thank you so much. We will get started, our first item on the agenda is COVID-19 Comprehensive Report. Commissioner Greg Kesterman.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon Commissioners, good to see you today. So, our numbers continued to rise just slightly, today we are at 181 cases per day, I believe last week, or two weeks ago when I was here, it was about 160. So they continue to inch up, although at this point, nothing super concerning. To put that into perspective, back in January, we were nearly at 2,500 cases per day, so we are nowhere close to that level. Before the meeting, I was actually chatting with Ms. Hervey, and you know, the comment she had about how many tests are actually making their way to being reported, many people are testing at home, and those tests do not show up here, and that is an accurate statement, these are only PCR tests, or medically observed antigen tests, so we are not capturing all of the COVID in the community, but it is still a barometer and a tool that we're using. One other point, you'll see later in the slides, how the CDC map no longer uses cases per 100,000, they've shifted and used different metrics, and we've been doing that for months now, so that's in part because of that. Looking at the geographic distribution in Hamilton County, you can see the east side certainly has seen a more significant increase in reported tests, don't really have a specific answer on why this may be, it's possible that there's more medical diagnoses occurring on the east side, and more self-home test kits on the west side, not guaranteed that that's the reason, but there definitely is an increase on the east side of the county. As far as variants that we are seeing in our community at this point, we are only seeing Omicron, we're not seeing Delta or any of the other major strains. The variant of Omicron right now that is most predominant in our region and the nation is the BA2.121, and you'll see on this next slide, which is only for our region, you can see on the left bottom graph there, the variant kind of increasing while the other two variants are certainly on their way out of our community. The most important metrics seem to be to follow hospitalizations, and so I kind of zoomed in first, and you can see hospitalizations certainly are on the rise, although nowhere close to where we were earlier in the pandemic. Right now, we have 84 individuals within our hospital systems, and nine individuals in the ICU. And then looking at it from a much broader perspective, where we've come from, you can see that we are seeing increases, but it's nowhere close to where we have been in this pandemic. We will continue to watch those numbers as well. Deaths right now, about one death occurs every four days, which also is very much tied to those who are in the ICU, we have very low numbers, I believe nine in the ICU, and therefore, we are not seeing a lot of death in Hamilton County right now, as it relates to COVID-19. Our office continues to do a lot of work with vaccinations, we continue to be set up out at the Board of Elections, we see about 200 people either at the Board of Elections or one of our other locations per week, so we are continuing to provide boosters, we're continuing to provide information, we have people still coming in just asking questions. We also are continuing to give away COVID-19 at-home test kits at the Board of Elections as well as our office, so we do see the public coming in and utilizing those resources. As mentioned, we do have about 122 cases per 100,000, according to the Centers for Disease Control, and then lastly, Hamilton County remains green or low for community transmission and community level. It is worth pointing out that there are a couple spots in Ohio now that are in medium, and a few spots up north that are actually in high for community levels. If we transitioned to medium, it really does not impact us, the CDC recommendations don't change, it's when we go to high that they would change and recommend wearing masks in indoor public locations. So at this point, Hamilton County remains green, and I'm hopeful that we start to see some downward trends here in the coming weeks. That is all I have for slides, but happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much Commissioner, just one comment, when we looked at the one slide about the east side, and more diagnosis on the east side, yeah, and I'm just wondering, are we taking a more aggressive approach to try to find out why that is? Because as we know, we're transient in Hamilton County, we go all over the place, so I would be very interested in how we're going to figure that out.
You know, the number, so while cases are important, the number one way to keep yourself healthy is vaccine, and so my team continues to target those areas with low vaccination rates. That said, some of the areas that are highlighted in red actually have fairly high vaccination rates, and so our team is working with some of the leaders who are putting this data together to understand any trends and ways that we can better impact our community.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you for the slide, and positives, some positive news, but talking about, as we are at the travel season now, and I just wanted to kind of get an update from you, are you getting updates? Because I know, one, people are required to get tested before they go on a cruise, I don't know if that helps increase, you know, folks getting tested, but are there anything else that we need to know as we're in this travel season? People are traveling abroad, people are traveling domestically, is there anything you're hearing from the CDC regarding that?
So, in general, the CDC is not putting out recommendations against traveling, they continue to message some of the same things that you've heard me say, and you know, it's tough if you've spent money on a trip, and you're getting ready to travel, and you feel kind of icky in the morning, you really need to take and pause and test yourself, so that you're not hopping on an airplane and making people around you sick. We are encouraging folks to continue to test at home, and we certainly recognize the fact that in airports, in airplanes, on buses, it's crowded, and so if you're concerned at all, we certainly recommend wearing a mask, which does provide both yourself and those around you some protections.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes, thank you, thank you Commissioner for being here. Just two quick questions, one is, I've lost track of the eligibility for people to go get their second booster, what is the age eligibility for that?
So, anyone over the age of 50 can get their second booster shot, if you have a primary care physician, it's recommended you touch base with them first, some are recommending that you get it right away, depending on maybe some health conditions, others are recommending that you wait until maybe possibly this fall, so there is a little bit of a mix, it's certainly safe and you certainly can get it now, but I would recommend you check in.
Do we have any expectation for those below the age of 50?
If you have underlying health conditions and you're below the age of 50, you certainly are eligible as well, and once again, if you have access to a physician, I would recommend you just touch base with them before doing so. If you don't have access to a physician, certainly just come into our clinic, and any of our nurses would be happy to discuss that with you.
But, in the past, we've gone from, you know, 70 to 60, so do you expect at some point, we're going to have eligible population below the age of 50?
It's actually anticipated come this fall, that everyone will be recommended to go out and get it. What they were seeing was the level of antibodies in your bloodstream decreasing over the age of 50, I don't believe they've seen that yet for those under the age of 50, and so the data is not supporting you to rush out and get it, so I don't anticipate a change in that age.
Okay, great, thank you. One last thing, so, also in the past, we've seen things start up near Cuyahoga County, and numbers start to rise up there, and then start to creep through the state to the south. How long has Cuyahoga County in that area been on this, in this higher level?
So, two weeks ago, one county in eastern Ohio turned yellow, and this week on Thursday is when we saw all of the additional changes in Cuyahoga, as well as Franklin County on the map.
Okay, so are we just keeping our fingers crossed down here?
We certainly are, you know, we're continuing to message, we're continuing to make sure we have access to tests and, as well as vaccinations.
Okay, all right, well hopefully in two weeks when you come back, we won't have seen that progression that we've seen in the past.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much for coming, thank you for all that you do, you and your staff.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Enterprise Zone Agreement, I believe Harry is here from Aloy, and some other people, good afternoon.
Good afternoon Commissioners, and thank you for having us here today, I'm Harry Blanton with Aloy Development, the county's economic development office, and we have before you an Enterprise Zone Agreement for your consideration with Stigler Supply. Stigler is a company in Forest Park, and they're proposing an expansion of their existing building by 14,000 square feet for about $1.6 million. We have the President John Tenenfeld with Stigler Supply, who will give a PowerPoint presentation, but we also have Chris Anderson with Forest Park here, so after Mr. Tenenfeld's presentation, we'll be available for any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
All right, so I'll run through this real quick. Stigler Supplies, third generation, family-owned business located in the Forest Park area, we're currently in our 53-year, 33rd year of service, we service about 75 miles of the tri-state area, janitorial, maintenance, food service supplies. Currently, we're sitting on 23,000 square feet, about 20 of that is current warehouse and 3,000 office, looking to put another 14,723 square feet in warehouse only, onto the building. Currently, we employ 22 people. That just shows you where we're at, we're up in Forest Park off North and Boulevard, on Edwood Drive, which is a business district. Quick overview, kind of picture of it, we're using the rest of our land that's available with the proposed addition, so just coming out on the right side there with the new addition, adding more dock doors, we currently have two docks and two drive-in doors, going to five docks and two drive-in doors. So we got a proposed increase of adding some more jobs and taking our total spend to 935 on payroll, over the next three years. So talking about a tax abatement of 75% for four years to support the project. And that is the short and sweet version. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much for your presentation, I remember Stigler Supply when I was the mayor out there, and you guys had opportunities to move other places, and you decided this is where you wanted to be, and you've been a great partner to the city of Forest Park, since I can remember.
Yeah, they've been good to work with, and Chris has helped out a bunch too, so he's helped us try to keep us there, which makes sense, instead of trying to jump and go to a whole new building.
Yes, great, and I think your ask is reasonable, what you're asking us to consider, but I will open it up to our, to my colleagues, Vice President Reese.
Thank you very much, thank you for your presentation, and thanks for being here this many years, so we appreciate that. Question for you, did you used to be on Reading Road, or did you have a, something there?
We were close, well, we've been out there for about 28 years.
Right.
We were down by the Vi-Duct, is where we used to sit, closer to downtown.
Gotcha.
So they were down there for a while.
Gotcha, yeah, no, I'm familiar with your supplies, my parents had a banquet hall for almost 30 years, and my mother got all of our supplies from there, so I'd have to make those runs when I'm home from college, and she's like, you gotta go down there, and we gotta make sure it's clean, and have to have the best supplies, so.
Yeah, there you go.
I do want to thank you for that, and, yeah, definitely supporting, support this, when we're talking about expansion, more jobs, and you're doing it in a tough, a tough time, tough economy, so I'm happy to support it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you, thank you for being here, thank you for your very short presentation, we like short and sweet here, so, one question I have, and it might be for the other gentleman in the room, just wondering, I'm not as familiar with the area, I'm wondering about the community support, I'm sure you enjoy community support for what you've already done in this community and the expansion, I just wanted to get more information related to that.
And Chris can elaborate a little more than I can on that, but he's helped us out on a couple different attributes, you want to jump in?
Thank you, I'm Chris Anderson with the city of Forest Park. Yeah, the, our planning commission worked with the company on the design and layout of the site, and Stigler was very cooperative, and we arrived at a solution I think that everybody could like, and, yeah, the support was unanimous in our council and planning commission.
Okay, that's very helpful, yeah, and you described this as a business district, is it like an industrial park kind of thing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so you've got a lot of similarly situated properties nearby, that are in the same kind of, you know, it's not like you're in a residential area or anything like that?
Very much so, it's a planned industrial park.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you, that's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, and we always look for increase in employees, increase in payroll, and then when I see four years, you never hardly see that, so thank you Ken, you, Chris, yeah, I know Chris, I've been knowing him for 30 years, but thank you for the work that you did also, so thank you so much. With no other questions, we will, and what's the next step on this?
So this is just a presentation today, it'll come before you June 16th for a vote, so if you have any questions in between then, let us know, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move forward, our next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding hosting the FIFA 2026, and I will pass this over to our administrator to begin the discussion, as we know, we have heard that June the 16th, FIFA will announce the areas that will be considered for hosting the World Cup in 2026, and I will pass it over to our administrator to get us started in the discussion.
Thank you Madam President, and I'll do my best with the mask on here to stay audible as I'm moving through this, but I wanted to provide the board with an update on the 2026 World Cup bid, but more specifically, the bid can mean a lot of different things as it relates to a host community, but, so very specifically, I wanted to provide the board with an update and next steps as it relates to the county's role as stadium authority. So as the board indicated last week, and as Madam President has just indicated, on June 16th, we anticipate that there will be an announcement by FIFA as it relates to host city selection. FIFA requires in advance of that announcement, for the various communities that are in the competition for, for selection as a host committee to sign on as, as a host city, and to sign on as the stadium authority, or the stadium authority to sign on to various documents specifically relate to various obligations of the stadium authority, and the, and specifically the capital improvements and upgrades that would be needed to the stadium, which is the role that the county would be playing within the 2026 World Cup bid. So, just a little bit of background, for those, again, who may be watching at home, as the board is aware, the FIFA World Cup is held every four years, and has been held every four years since 1930, I believe there may have been an interruption there at one point in a wartime sequence, the largest sporting event in the world, currently, the 22, 22 World Cup is, is being hosted in Qatar, we are, we know that the World Cup is watched annually by roughly, or watched when it occurs, by around 3.2 billion people, at least that was the, the statistics in 2018, specifically to some of the more local matches, some of the round of 16 matches pulled more than 300 million viewers in each of those round of 16 matches in 2018. I think for 2022, they're anticipating a combined television audience of around 5 billion. So, 2026, the 2026 World Cup, which we're talking about today, this is a combined bid, US, Canada, and Mexico, 16 to 17 cities to host up to 60 matches, the first, this is the first competition to feature 48 teams from the 32, which has typically been, or traditionally been hosted. There are currently 17 US cities in competition for 10 to 11 host city spots. So, we, again, as I indicated, FIFA is planning to make that announcement on June 16th. Flipping slides here, again, just some background on the community's efforts, as the board is aware, this effort's been going on since roughly 2017, maybe even before that, when US Soccer led the nation's efforts to secure the United States as a, as a host country for the, for the World Cup, in a combined bid with Canada and Mexico, beating out Morocco for that, for that right. Cincinnati, and when I say Cincinnati, I'm talking about the broader community, Hamilton County inclusive, has been in that competition ever since, with Paul Brown Stadium serving as the focal point for the actual matches. This culminated with a FIFA site visit back on October 22nd, 2021, and I should note that, the thought is, is that once a bid is received, or that we are selected, I think the idea is that there would be a special purpose entity that would be established to serve officially as the host community for the competition. I'm just going to go very briefly into responsibilities of the host community, because technically, the county as an organization will not be really the host community, the county would serve in the role of stadium authority, but the host community would, and again, this would be, likely be a special purpose entity, would be involved with venue coordination, including office space for FIFA, communications, promotion, public relations, coordinating transportation and traffic management, coordinating accommodations and hotel capacity, assisting with volunteers, with FIFA's Fan Fest, with all the fire, medical, and safety associated with the event, ensuring that FIFA commercial affiliates were incorporated into, into local events, and I believe there would also be the ability for that host city to purchase a certain percentage of available ticket capacity for distribution for that event. Specifically to the issue of stadiums, the selection process for, and the selection process for stadiums, FIFA indicates that it looks at multiple, or looked at multiple criteria, these include the capacity of the stadium, location, the transportation connections with the city center, parking facilities, existing or potential encumbrances associated with that stadium, construction and renovation plans of the stadium, the use of the stadium following 2026, they look at whatever costs that there would be to FIFA for hosting the event at that stadium, as other hosted, as well as other host city characteristics, such as airports, training facilities, transportation, accommodation, infrastructure, et cetera. Stadium Authority responsibilities, and this becomes important because as a, as the stadium authority, the county would be required to sign off on the stadium authority agreement, and all the addenda, and all the obligations associated with that, we have that document, that full document now, I believe it's going to be, will be posted to our website a little bit later on, on today, in advance of the board's consideration on Thursday. But, first and foremost, the stadium needs to be able to provide sufficient capacity, so, we know that the initial matches up through quarterfinals require a minimum capacity of 40,000, we anticipate there will be four to five matches, so a total of between 267,000 and 340 attendees, there will also likely be test events that will need to be at capacity as well, so that is another opportunity for filling the stadium in a manner associated with, with the, with the World Cup. So, what is the stadium authority responsible for? And so, this is in no particular order, but the stadium authority must essentially deliver what is termed a clean stadium, so, so free of advertising and encumbrances, and I should note that we are working very cooperatively as of this moment, even with the Cincinnati Bengals, on that particular, on all of these issues, knowing that the Bengals are in fact the primary tenant of, of the stadium, and certainly, we need to ensure that whatever is going to happen as it relates to the stadium, that we have cleared it with, with our, with our tenant, and make sure that there is an understanding and expectation as to how those operations would occur in 2026 when FIFA was here, because obviously FIFA will be needing that stadium in full to, to meet the needs of the FIFA competition. The authority must provide access to the stadium prior to and following the matches, there is an exclusive period of occupation associated with the stadium, then there's a non-exclusive period, so there's a period before and after when FIFA needs access, would need access to, to the stadium. Perhaps most notably, there are certain modifications that are required of the stadium authority, and I'll get to that in a deeper review here shortly. The authority is, the authority is also required to operate the stadium, and I'll touch on that shortly as well. One note I would say is that FIFA itself is responsible for sourcing, installing and dismantling what is known as stadium overlay infrastructure, so anything defined as temporary equipment, or things that are, that are entirely associated with or exist just for the competition, FIFA is responsible for, for that. The stadium, FIFA requires host communities and stadium authorities to meet certain requirements, as I had indicated, so as it relates to stadium authorities, these specific technical requirements relate to general items such as roof and concourses, the pitch, player tunnels and pitch access areas, team and referee dressing areas, medical service areas, how parking and loading works at the stadium, dimensions and specifications for VIP seats and lounges, telecommunications infrastructure, IT technology, areas for a fan zone outside the stadium, planning for evacuations and emergencies, specifications for climate control and various aspects of the stadium, specifications on screens, and public address systems, utilities, and how ticketing works, so a lot of the stuff that we do on a regular basis as it relates to operating the stadium. So, all of these requirements were, have been assessed by county stadium staff, PBSL staff, Gensler with some host partner assistance as well, in particular, I want to thank Turner, MSA, and also Motts, who's not listed here, who helped us with some of the turf information. There was a FIFA site visit, as I indicated, back on October 22nd, 2021, and the visit resulted in identified capital infrastructure needs. Overall that, I think the, the visit went very well, our staff was able to answer questions on how we would functionally meet the requirements of FIFA at PBS, but as I said, there are some specific things that would be required at the stadium as we know it today. The primary identified needs relate to the pitch, the installation of a natural pitch, which includes a vacuum ventilation base, and, and pitch stitching, as well as altering the pitch dimensions, which I'll go into here in a second, which relates to the corners of the stadium. And I'm not going to go into all of these technical specifications, but the installation of the, of a new grass pitch per FIFA specifications is really the, the primary obligation that's been indicated by FIFA to all host city competitors, and it's what the stadium authority must do to ensure the installation of a quality, of a FIFA quality pitch or field by the summer of 2025. So this is a natural grass field, different than the turf that we currently use down at PBS, but a bit more complex, obviously, than just spreading seed and allowing it to grow. to grow. Should be noted that FIFA has indicated at this point that it would want a pitch, as I said, installed by 2025, so that there's one full season, one full growing season associated with conditioning that field, and so that they were not testing it during play at the World Cup. The estimated cost of that installation is 4 million, and again, to be installed by 2025, just as, for the board's frame of reference, the existing field was scheduled to be replaced in 2026. So there is some consistency between when we'd be looking to do this and when our traditional pitch or field replacement would be. As I indicated, all this has to be done to FIFA's precise pitch specifications. So this is just a chart that shows you some of those dimensional requirements, not real easy to show the different lengths or widths, and not sure it's entirely of great information to the board right now. But the field length and width of a FIFA field is obviously different than what we use for NFL, so there's obviously some additional expansion of the bowl that's necessary, and I'll get to that here shortly. So the field perimeter, so while we talked about the pitch specifications, we also would need to make sure that the perimeter of the field was able to accommodate the touch lines and goal lines associated with the pitch, but also to allow for sufficient circulation around the pitch. As the board's aware, PBS was designed with the ability to remove the corners, which was incredible foresight 25 years ago for the stadium. However, there is in fact some more space needed, which will require some additional concrete work and seat removal during the NFL offseason to accommodate those dimensions. Those costs have been estimated around, at around 5.9 million. So this will be temporary in its impact, would be done during the NFL offseason, and the cost, as presented, also includes the cost of reinstalling those seats for the NFL season, so that the Bengals don't lose that capacity. And this would obviously make the stadium itself more adaptable to FIFA level soccer matches in the future. A little more of a bird's eye perspective on this, this gives you a sense as to what we're, what we'd really be doing there in terms of the corner work. And an even maybe nicer picture that gives you just an idea of how that would work, the removal of the seats, the removal of the treads and risers, the precast walls, and ultimately what it would look like on FIFA game day. In terms of other modification needs, as I indicated, the pitch and the corners are the primary capital improvements that FIFA has indicated would be necessary. There are other modification needs as well, though. Before I go into those more deeply, though, I should note that we've been very clear as we've continued to go back to FIFA, that as we look at these other modifications, that they would be done in accordance with our PBS master plan and in accordance with our annual CIP. So as the board knows, we have, we put aside $5 million annually for our CIP budget. So when we do our annual CIP, we'd work very closely with the team to determine what needs to be done, what opportunities are there to accomplish our master plan projects within that CIP, and of course, what opportunity there is to meet the FIFA expectations within that budget, so that we would be making progress towards what FIFA is looking for. Many of these projects have actually already been done, but we're looking at things like a stadium video screen, which actually we are looking to replace in the 2025, 26 timeframe, which is already included actually in our stadium financial model. Suites and club seats and VIP seating areas, there's some upgrades and modifications required there. Media areas. We've done a lot of work already on lighting, on sound, on ticket scanning mechanics. The board is aware, we have a Wi-Fi project under construction that the Bengals are fronting the costs of. Work on concessions, those types of things which would also need to be modified. But again, our thought would be that we would do that commensurate with our master plan and within the, our annual CIP, so that we can leverage as much of this as possible. Stadium operations. Capital improvements are obviously a big part of the FIFA requirements, but there's other responsibilities as well. But most of these others are much more in the context of what we traditionally do day-to-day, on a day-to-day basis down at the stadium. I know Joe Feldkamp is here, who's our Director of Stadium and Parking. These guys are the best at what they do. They know how to do these things, they know how to run special events at Paul Brown Stadium, and they do it very well. But all of these things, whether it's coordinating with governmental entities, ensuring spectator mobility, operating, you know, public announcements, spectator information systems, maintaining the technical facilities in the stadium, provision of utilities, general operating and maintenance, like cleaning, waste management, this is what we do pretty much every day. So this is, but again, the agreement would require that we would be responsible for There is also a controlled area responsibility that would be within the agreement. So this is largely an area outside of the perimeter of the stadium where activities, primarily commercial activities, would be limited, marketing and promotion would be limited, especially on match days. The FIFA agreement is very clear around wanting to prohibit ambush marketing tactics for, during the FIFA competition. There is, the board had asked a question about a tax-free zone. There is no real tax-free zone that is identified in the agreement. There is a controlled area, as we talked about, and we do know that they have indicated that they're looking, that FIFA is looking for exemption on certain municipal taxes that are put in place. We know that on December 8, '21, the City of Cincinnati passed an ordinance waiving admission taxes for these matches. So that is more along the lines of what they're talking about. No real impact, to our knowledge, on transient occupancy or sales tax. We also know that the stadium authority is responsible for providing staffing and operational services, the cost of which will be reimbursed, and I'll go into that in just a moment. I also just want to acknowledge one note. FIFA acknowledges in this agreement that these specifications could change. They could change from the current versions to new versions, they could be modified, enhanced, or reduced from what they currently indicate. So a good example of that is we know that the, there is a significant portion of the hosting, stadium hosting requirements that lead to, or that discuss issues of seating bowl sightlines. So when you're sitting in that stadium and you're looking down at the field, the ability to see every aspect of that field, no matter where action is taking place. And there are different sightlines for soccer matches versus football games, and the stadiums are just simply built differently as it relates to sightlines. I think as FIFA got into the United States and they started working with stadiums, recognizing that almost all the stadiums they're working with were constructed primarily for NFL football, they realized that was something that likely just wasn't going to be able to happen. So that that particular requirement is not something that FIFA is pressing, and that was significant. My understanding is the cost to adjust the sightlines in the stadium by essentially raising the field up, so that people that are sitting at a level can see everything, would have been close to $10 million. And that is not, as we are aware of it today, a requirement of FIFA. So some other matters I just wanted to discuss that the board should just be aware of as it relates to the stadium authority agreement. Some of these are more routine than others, but again, the provision of a project management plan, essentially, we just have to lay out for FIFA when things are going to be done and what specifications they will hit by the time they're done. FIFA asks that we assist them with permitting and licensing, that we cooperate on inspection visits, that we conduct three test events prior to the first match, that we clear encumbrances associated with the stadium usage. There is an item related to FIFA's rights related to the stadium name, that they can, for the purposes of the FIFA competition, call the stadium something that they want to call the stadium. So for instance, I know in Germany, they, in a, they called one of the, I think, might have been Alliance Stadium, they called it FIFA World Cup Stadium Munich, or something like that. So just something that would be more generic, but that's something that they reserve the right to do. They ask that we transfer intellectual rights to visual representations of the stadium, that we achieve certification for sustainable operations associated with the stadium, that we conduct all of our operations protective of human rights, that we assist with brand protection, that we provide insurance, and that we agree that to assign the agreement would require the approval of FIFA. I mentioned cost reimbursement. So the stadium rental fee would still apply to this particular event. So we're looking at four to five matches, so we'd be looking at $100,000 per match. We would also be applying that $100,000 fee to ticketed events on non-match days. So if FIFA was going to be using the stadium in a way consistent with a, an event at the stadium that was ticketed, that there would be a $100,000 fee there as well. We've also indicated a match day reimbursement cost, so basically the cost of the staff and the services on match days at around $347,000, and on non-match days of $122,000. And finally, just to wrap up, a couple of things. The board had asked about economic impact. This weekend, I had received a copy of the Economic and Fiscal Impact Statement prepared by the City of Cincinnati, or I'm sorry, by the University of Cincinnati, which shows total non-local visitor impact of around 449 million within the metropolitan statistical area. My understanding is about 58% of that would accrue directly to Hamilton County. County sales tax generation of 2.491 million from the event, and 1.55 million associated with the county's 6.5% transient occupancy tax. The event will also help to support 3,087 jobs in the MSA. I should note that I think the, my understanding is that UC was conservative in some of their assumptions, so some of these numbers, particularly on occupancy tax, where they used a conservative number in terms of residents or visitors per room, in order to just be a bit more conservative on that, on those numbers. The board had also asked about private contributions anticipated from the business in philanthropic communities. My understanding right now is that there would be between, the expectation is to raise approximately 35 to 50 million for things such as Fan Fest, the construction of training facilities, as well as legacy projects associated with the FIFA event. And now finally, so the first thing that would need to be done, as we indicated, in order to prepare the county for receipt of a host bid selection, or host community selection on the 16th, would be to approve the stadium authority agreement, which includes, again, some of the main things of the cost reimbursement plan, as well as the renovation plans, with the expectation that FIFA would be making an announcement on June 16. Our counsel, Roger Friedman and Mr. Gableman, who are both here today, have been in discussions with FIFA to make some adjustments to the stadium authority agreement. Number one, making sure that the county assumes that role as stadium authority, ensuring that FIFA acknowledges that some of the, that these improvements will be done in the context of our stadium plan, stadium master plan and CIP, language that ensures the effective coordination between FIFA and the Bengals, as well as other language that's more traditional to our contracting related to matters of indemnification, et cetera. So we're still in the process of working through this. Hopefully, we'll have an agreement, a clean agreement by Thursday for the board. I can tell you that the modifications that we're currently in the process of making are not large in their extent, so the documents that the board currently has are largely, as they probably will look, but there are some things that were, there are some modifications we are making, which while maybe small in scope, are larger in substance, just to make sure that we are proceeding with this in a manner consistent with board policy direction. So with that, commissioners, I will turn it over back to you, Madam President, for any questions. Again, I just want to acknowledge Joe Feldkamp is here, as well as Tom and Roger, if there are any questions that focus on the operational or contractual legal portions of the stadium authority agreement. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much for your summary. Just a few comments. Of course, my concern is the total upfront costs for the county. And as we look at the total upfront cost, the revenue benefit, you had mentioned the 449 million, how did you classify it, that we would generate?
So Madam President, yeah, the 449 million, that would be the value, I'm sorry.
Yes, it, non-local visitor impact, and the county would receive 58% of that approximately?
Is the value of that non-local visitor spending impact that would occur, 58% is roughly, what percentage of that would occur within Hamilton County, correct?
Correct. So the other percentage that's left out of that would go where?
To the other counties in the metropolitan statistical area.
Okay, 58%. Okay. And you mentioned in here, Jeff, there is no tax-free zone, no impact on transient occupancy or sales tax. I know we had heard about tax-free, and so now we're seeing there is no indication of either one, the tax-free or the transient, and how did that come about?
Yeah, no, it's a good question, and the initial concern was, is a good concern as well, because the authority agreement does reference municipal taxes and the stadium authority and the host community taking efforts to assist with local municipal taxes. I think the way that is manifesting itself within this particular agreement is the waiving, and I can say, from what I've heard through conversations directly from FIFA, that their biggest concern with that was the municipal admissions tax, which would apply at Paul Brown Stadium, which according to an ordinance of the city in December was waived. So that, so there was the expectation that the stadium itself would be the focus of a non-tax area as it relates to municipal admissions taxes. So I think that's where that concept came from.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And lastly, as you were saying, we have a master plan, CIP plan, that we have allocated 5 million for improvements, and some of the improvements that are being asked, we were already doing, and maybe may up it a little bit more, but a lot of it was already in the master plan, which is, which is a good thing. I think we need to be prepared for, if this is signed and we send it forward to FIFA, that they may come back with other alternatives, or additions, or increase as it relates to the renovation, and how much are we willing to pay to be able to undergird, of course, our budget and the Hamilton County residents, and make sure there is a benefit for us, which there is a benefit financially, but how much are we willing, as a board, to say, we'll do this, but we can't go, you know, to 10 million more for this? So that's something that the board is going to have to take a look at, definitely.
And Madam President, that's an excellent point, and on that, on that front, no, I think you're right. The way we've tried to structure this and we tried to frame this is that we know there are some things right out of the gate that we're going to have to do for the stadium in order to be, in order to entertain the World Cup. The pitch specifications, ensuring the perimeter of the field, and then there are some other improvements that they have been, that they have requested as well. Some of the things I'd mentioned, whether it's concessions, suites, media areas, et cetera, and as you had indicated, and as we have indicated in our communications, that that would be done within, so we will address those items. We'll address them, though, within the context of our master plan and within our CIP. Are there other things that FIFA could come back and ask for? I can't say right now unabashedly that there would not be. I can tell you that I've had conversations with the local business community as well about, to the degree there are things that would fall outside the scope of something that we would typically be doing in the stadium to preserve the stadium asset long-term for the residents of Hamilton County, that we would be working with the business community to... to install those items as elements of the fundraising that occurs through the private and civic sector and philanthropic sector as well. So, just to answer your question on that.
So, and that's an excellent point, as they come back to us. Hopefully, they won't come back if we agree on a certain amount and what we're willing to do, but as they come back, then we can reach out, as you were saying, to the private entities for, for some assistance, so. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First, I want to preference my questions and comments by saying, first of all, as a fan, as former deputy director of tourism, I support the World Cup. What we're discussing today, though, gets down to the details. And many times, we have seen in public projects, for example, the original lease that was on the ballot for the taxpayers for the stadiums. What was on the ballot wasn't the problem. It was when we got down to the contract, when we got into the details. And I know that none of us, I don't think any of us, I hope none of us in this room was around, because that's where the taxpayers got screwed, is in the details. Now, I'm for the, the World Cup, I'm for bringing events to Hamilton County that brings additional funding. My business model has always been, how do we bring more outside money through tourism, through business, so that we can reduce the cost on the people that live here? But one of the things that I'm concerned about is the details of this World Cup. Now, I had been asking since last year, when I got elected, for the bid package, and we received this weekend, holiday weekend, late at night, 200, over 250 something pages of now we get the requirements. We received, I believe it was yesterday, Memorial Day, we received the economic impact. And so, I just think we need to have some kind of standards. We got to have one set of rules, because the things that the World Cup is asking, now even though they say, oh, this is bigger than the Super Bowl, Super Bowl don't require you to come with all this, some of this stuff. We got to tear up Paul Brown Stadium, and I'm concerned about that. If the World Cup could fit in FC Stadium, which most people who are watching think that the World Cup is at FC, it is not at FC Stadium. It is at Paul Brown Stadium. And so, when I get into the, I came in today, I'm on crutches, and I tried to read as quick as I can, but as, Mr. Administrator, you know I like to read. I want to read the details. And from what I'm seeing in here, once you sign off, and maybe I'm wrong, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, because I, I want to be able to be supportive, but I don't want the taxpayers to get screwed. In here, it says that once you sign this contractual agreement, they can make changes and we are obligated. The hosting agreement does not contain a complete detail and final list of hosting obligations, and not necessarily the final operational setup and allocation of the roles and responsibilities. And then it goes on to say, government guarantees. Now, we getting into some guarantees now. And we're not guaranteed we going to get the money that this economic studies, I've been a part of them a lot, but even when you look at this economic study, the music festival is bringing in almost equal amount on a, on a annual basis. We getting this for just three, four days, and we going to turn over the whole county or everything to World Cup. We got to get rid of our sponsors, can't have sponsor, they get all the sponsorship. They come in and they give us stuff at 15 minutes before it's time to vote, hand us 200 pages and say, you got to go with it before we even know if we got the, if we even got a deal. I put up here, we can't go in silos, because when you look at 2026, it's a, is the magic year. 2026, that's the magic year. That's the year that PBS showed us half a billion dollars in upgrades, and that didn't include the master plan. That'll probably be a billion. That doesn't even include if our tenant is going to be there. We're landlords. Landlords don't fix up if your lease is getting ready to end and you don't have a, an extension. So, we don't even have an extension, and we giving away everything that we can negotiate. Then, World Cup said, we got to have a convention center, right, a convention hotel right away. That was presented last week. That was 500, that's another half a billion. 368 million for the hotel, 100 million dollars for convention center, and that was just estimates. And that's got to be done by 2026. And then, and then, of course, here comes the World Cup with a whole lot of things that we got to do. In this document, just in my quick preview, and like I said, I only had a couple, two hours to kind of get through it. I'm sure when I get home, I'll have a lot more. But in here, it even talks about hotels. It, it even determines what the hotel cost is. I would guarantee you that the hotel rates for the Jazz Festival, AKA Sistine Music Festival, was more expensive than what it's going to be for World Cup, because they going to control the rates. And then they want so many rooms, plus 20%. That's in here. There are some other things, I know, Mr. Administrator, you rushed through real quick. You said, well, we got a couple of things. These things cost. They want, they don't, we got to, we got to do the insurance. Why, why are we paying for the insurance? We got to pay for the taxpayers. We're paying for the insurance. Initially, we were told to take up the AstroTurf at the Paul Brown Stadium and put grass was going to be 1 million dollars to take up and 1 million to put down. I write very good notes. Now, we find out it's 4 million dollars. It's just a lot they asking for, and I don't really see guarantee. Now, one of the things I would like to see if we go with this, I'd like to see a fund and a tax code put on all, all taxes that weekend, and put it in a fund, so we know exactly what we made that weekend. Most of the time, we make these estimates, we come up short. So, I'm just concerned, you put on here, we're going to do this anyway, we're going to, I, I don't know if I'm going to do this anyway if the Bengals don't have a, a extension of the contract. They're up in 2026. Why, what would we have to negotiate? I done done, we done done everything. So, what, what would the taxpayers have to negotiate with the Bengals? We done, we done fixed everything up. We got to have something to negotiate at the table. You don't go in and do everything and then say, well, because then you at a disadvantage. So, I think it needs to be at the package, and, and, Mr. Administrator, I would ask, and, and please, don't send me nothing on Wednesday night saying, we got to vote on this, hurry up tomorrow, by Thursday. This is a serious, once we sign this, we are obligated to make any changes, according to this, that they want to make. Now, you know, I know they playing soccer, but we got to play chess. Can't get checkmated every time for the taxpayers. So, I'm a little concerned about that, and I thought the numbers were a little low. I know you said they weren't conservative, and I appreciate UC, who also did the study for the music festival, and they were conservative, and they brought 107 million dollars every year. But you said they were a little bit low, but I thought those numbers were interesting. Let me pull that out. So many of these documents. Their numbers said, I believe it was 19 million, trying to find that document. I may have to come back to it, got to find, I got, oh, here it is. So, the economic impact, I saw a number of 19 million dollars when we really cut through the maze, and I just thought that number was pretty low, in terms of our tax revenues that would come in. And this is everybody. This is the city of Cincinnati, this is Hamilton County, the state of Ohio, we bringing in 19 million dollars. Well, the stuff we're doing is going, going to be over almost 20 million dollars of upfront expenses. So, I just think what is very important is that we get a realization on the upfront expenses. You mentioned Wi-Fi. The Bengals fronted the money, but we still owe them 8 million dollars for Wi-Fi. 8 million dollars. So, it's a lot of debt that we are incurring, and I just want to make sure, I'd like to, I want to have the World Cup, we want to make it exciting, but no matter what country wins, I want to make sure Hamilton County taxpayers win. And I would hope that we are able to see some real numbers before you sign any contract, because this contract seems to be pretty fluid. It holds us accountable if we do not meet these requirements. We are held accountable if the organization that you mentioned do not meet the requirements. So, my question, my first question to you is, when we sign this contract, does it allow us for wiggle room if they change, can we change our, in other words, President Dumas kind of mentioned, if the price goes up, and we say, wait a minute, we can't go above that, are we able to get out? Or once we sign, at least according to this thing, we're stuck in it?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice President. So, as I tried to show in the presentation, so we're trying to do the best we can to make sure that we remain competitive in the process, yet at the same time that we, that we containerize the, the risk as, as much as possible. So, the way that we have attempted to do that is by indicating that we, as I said, we know that we have work to do on the pitch, we know we have work to do on the corners, and that the other work that we would do within the stadium bowl, whether it's on concessions, whether it's on suites, et cetera, that those would be done within the master plan and, and the CIP. To your question directly, and I think I had it as a slide in the, in the presentation, yes, there is the potential that FIFA could come back with another, with another criteria. What we, what I can say to date is that we've had conversations with the business community around, to the degree those requests are outside the scope of what we would normally do in the stadium, that we would put that into the queue for fundraising with the business and civic sector community. But no, I can't sit, sit here and say that there would, there is not going to be any additional requests that, that could, that FIFA could come back with. At the same time, I can tell you that, as we've talked with FIFA, we've also seen that where we have shown that something just isn't feasible within the scope of the stadium, that they have also been conscious and worked with us on, on that as well. We know that, I, I mentioned the issue of the, of the sightlines in the stadiums. We know that they recognize, and we've heard this from other communities as well, that they recognize, for instance, on the need to coordinate operationally with NFL teams, because many of the other stadiums are going to be using our NFL teams as well. So, I think there, this would be a give and take in that regard, but to your question about guaranteeing that we could move out of something if it came back, I can't sit here and guarantee that.
Yeah. I think that's the issue. I think for me, we need to know what is the cost that you're talking about. I mean, this, you know, you putting four over here and three over, what's the total cost? And then we could say, we don't want to go above that, and then it should be something in the, in the contract. And I know our lawyers are here, Roger and, and Tom, but it need to be in the contract. If it goes over that, then the business community picks it up. Don't come running back here to us. We got to have a cap. We can't have a moving target on this. There needs to be a cap on it. It doesn't seem like we're doing much negotiating, because all we're doing is, they're telling us what we got to do, and we're just running around trying to do it. I don't know where would the negotiation come in? Is there room for negotiation? Because I got some ideas that could bring more money in, if, but it seems like we're giving away our licensing of the actual stadium, the look of the stadium. We're giving away that, electoral, intellectual property. Two, we got to now get rid of our identity. It would not be the Paul Brown Stadium, we're going to give away identity. Number three, we paying for insurance. So, where is our negotiation? Do we get to come in? Because there's some things, certainly, I know our board would like to see, or is it just, we got to fulfill their checklist?
Well, no, I think in terms of negotiating, as we have worked with, with FIFA on issues, let's say, of capital, of capital improvements, that we have said very specifically that we know that there are some things that they absolutely want, pitch, corners, et cetera, and that there would be other things that would be desired by FIFA as well. And we said, we will take care of those within the context of, of our CIP, what we would normally be spending in, in that year. So, I think in terms of containerizing risk and negotiating on that, that's what, what we were looking at. In terms of intellectual property, I think mostly what we're talking about here is stuff of public record anyway. So, in terms of images, that type of thing on the stadium. And insurance, we know that we currently have, and we're working with risk, with our risk manager on this right now, but we know that we already carry a substantive policy in the amount required by FIFA on Paul Brown Stadium. We're just making, we're, right now, we're checking to make sure that we can transfer that for the precise use of, of the World Cup as well. So, yeah, some of the details, we've looked into those as well.
Yeah. I, I'm really concerned about the details. I think the concept, we all would love to have the World Cup. I'm concerned about those details, and you're saying, we already got insurance. I mean, we got people we contract with every day, they got to come up and provide insurance, and now we're going to provide the insurance. We're taking the risk. I think that's very important when we put that on there. And in here, under D6 called Finance in the 257-page document, says, government slash host cities are responsible for all public infrastructure and services, as well as other costs, other cost, that's a component, other, as well as other cost, related to the fulfillment of their obligations and requirements within the respective legal agreements and/or guarantees. So, once we sign this, that's what I'm worried about, because Thursday, you're asking us to vote to say, go ahead and sign. And in here, it's saying that if it's, if it's their legal document and we can't negotiate, to me, what it has said, that we, once we sign on, we have a guarantee to do everything they ask and everything they ain't already asked, and we don't have no wiggle room out. And I just, you know, that, to me, that's, that's tough. That's a tough thing. I don't know too many people in their own businesses signing guarantees that says you are obligated for these things and anything I think of after it. So, I just want us to be very careful in our legal documents, and if there is something, we need to put a number. And if it's anything above that number, it needs to be in the legal document, signed by whoever this, it says here, we will have a host person that would be in charge of the host committee. The county won't be involved with the host committee, but that host committee person needs to sign that anything above this number, the private sector has got to do it. Don't come running back here to the taxpayers. I think that is critical for, because this, this contract they got is just way too loose. It's a moving target. And I will have to say that in there, you only talk about the stadiums, and you talk about the pitch, and people who don't know what pitch is, it's the two corners. We're going to take those corners out, which reduces the size and the capacity of Paul Brown Stadium. Can you talk about putting those back in? And is there a cost to that, or will we just take them out and they're out?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Vice President. So, yeah, the cost that was, that I showed in that, and again, as you said, for, for folks at home, the pitch is, is the, the soccer field, and in accordance with the FIFA specs, the, the field is bigger than what we typically play on for, for NFL. But the cost, as shown in the presentation, for taking out those corners includes the cost of reinserting those seats for, for Bengal season. So, so that is included.
Okay. And then also on the pricing of the hotels, if you could get the CBB to get to us, they have a standard of hotels, this is actually pretty good on their behalf, five-star, four-star, three-star, it says, the price levels charged by all accommodation suppliers must reflect the true value of the related accommodation and conform to the market rates. No inflated prices due to FIFA coming to town. So, basically, we're charging, our hotels are charging more for the Cincinnati Music Festival than they're going to charge for FIFA. And I think that was good FIFA put in there, no inflation. So, I would like to know, because they got on here, if your hotel don't have this, you can't do that, can't do this, I'd like to hear from CBB, on do we have the types, they, mandatory on the types of rooms, plus, they want the groups to have, they want a constituent group rate, plus, they want 20% of the remaining rooms that would be sold to the general public. So, if you bring the price down, that's less in occupancy tax, because we get a, it's a percentage of the cost of the room. So, I'd like to get something from CBB regarding that, and that'd be something that's FIFA, room nights will be less, charging less than we charge to a Sistine Music Festival, and that's certainly something we need to look at. But I would like to get a cost analysis on everything as it relates to these three things. PBS upgrades, which we, all of this is 2026, PBS upgrades, the, the master plan, which is not in, we going to sign the contract, we don't even have the master plan yet from PBS, the Bengals lease. The Bengals lease, what would we be negotiating if we're doing everything already? The convention hotel, which is another 368 million plus convention center, 100 million, that's a half a billion. And then on top, and then an overlay of what the World Cup would cost us. I think we need all of that as soon as possible. And I hope that we wouldn't be getting nighttime, you know, midnight, 500 pages because we're going to be making an important decision on a contractual agreement that you will be signing. So I just wanted to make sure that we don't, we cross every T, we dot every I. And at the end of the day, we should be negotiating on behalf of the taxpayers. Those are our, they are our shareholders. And we should be negotiating the best deal on their behalf. So that's what I have for now. I may have some, oh, my last thing, one more thing, diversity. They got contracts on here that this appointed group, we will not be a part of it. It's an appointed group according to what you said in your PowerPoint. But there's a lot of contracts you put up there. I want to know what is, what was going to be in the contracts. It was one of your PowerPoints you talked about. They would be in charge of some of the expenses and contracts to do marketing promotion.
I think that, that, I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Vice President. I think that was related specifically to the host community, not necessarily the stadium authority. So whatever organization, the special purpose vehicle that is ultimately set up to run the host community, yes, I'm sure there would be contracts associated with those. There would also be contracts associated with the work that the stadium authority or the county would do. That would be procurement that would be done under the control of the county in accordance with our traditional state and county procurement law and policy respectively. So, but to your point, there, there would be other procurement done in the context of the World Cup associated with the host community and that would run through that special purpose vehicle. I'm not quite certain of the, the law that would apply to those procurements, but I, but we can look into that.
Yeah, I think that's important because there is no World Cup without Paul Brown Stadium. And so all these other groups that are running and they in charge, they doing it, we can't have it without a facility. So I think our, our responsibility goes beyond the facility. We're taking taxpayer money to fix this place up so that we could have a World Cup. I would hate to have some group out there who is getting all the contracts as usual, doing all of the, you know, all of the festivities. And then we have people, minority businesses coming to our meeting saying, we were left out. We weren't a part of it. It has happened too often, too many times, too many events, and it has to stop here. So I think we should lead with that tone, that if we going to sign this, I want that community group or whoever that is, they can't be faceless and nameless. But they have to make sure that there's going to be some, there, there is a commitment to inclusion so that everyone can financially benefit from the World Cup coming. Thank you.
Commissioner Drury House.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. The UC study I thought was really helpful in helping us better understand what we've been asking for, which is the economic impact to the community. And so, because this is a nebulous number until we have UC doing some research here and trying to evaluate what the income would be to all the municipalities, the county, and then the general community at large. And so this $450 million economic impact for non-local visitor spending, I think is a huge number. And I think that's the number that we've all been looking for and asking for. So I appreciate you getting that in front of us before we contemplate signing the agreement with the World Cup folks. So just a couple of other things, especially again, related to the report. I, I dug through some of these numbers and can see that the county in particular, and you know, I think we have to talk about this in terms of the really big picture of the $450 million impact to this community, but also then break it down because we are Hamilton County and what is the financial benefit to the county related to the hotel motel tax, related to the sales tax and, you know, and how, and the city's, you know, impact and all the rest of it. So these, these details have been especially helpful to me to better understand who's really going to benefit from the FIFA coming here if they do. So one thing related to the chart where they list out Hamilton County, and as you mentioned, it's over 2 million in sales tax, over 1 million in lodging tax. What I don't see included here is the parking revenue that will be generated if we have this event down at Paul Brown. And I think, you know, the expectation is that the parking garage would be full or near capacity for at least the four days where we have the games being played and then all the extracurricular events. So if we could, I don't know if Joe can just add that number in because I think that is part of the financial picture and, and the benefit for the county. So I just didn't see that included and I'm hoping we can get that number in there.
Yeah, Madam President, Commissioner Drury House, just very quickly, do want to acknowledge again Joe Feldkamp who's here. And, and Joe, as you would imagine, Joe has done those numbers. So I just had not yet included them into the, into the report. So I will get the board something here shortly that will, that will, that will provide some specificity on what we were thinking. Because it's, you know, we want to look at the relevant increment and not just the total amount of parking that's down there because we always have people parking down at the banks. But the, what the work Joe was doing was looking at how much more on an average basis over a 30-day period, given match days and non-match days. Some of this relates to where Fan Fest would be held. Fan Fest is held down on the riverfront. A Fan Fest is held somewhere else. So, but to your question, we'll get you that information as well because obviously the, the enterprise parking fund is, is important to the county and we'll get you the info on, on where that number would be estimated to go.
Yeah, thank you. I, I view that kind of as the hotel motel tax. It's a, it's a revenue source outside of the general fund or the sales tax. So it will be helpful just to pile, pile that in here. And then, you know, I think it is important from my perspective to think about not only the, the monies coming in because that has been made clear, but it's this overall impact of having Cincinnati front stage for the World Cup festivities and for the World Cup Games. And what that means to us as a community is it exponentially raises our profile throughout the country and throughout the world. And so that's something I know that can't really be quantified and it's not here because you can't quantify it. But I do, in the back of my mind, understand that there is this other benefit that both the county and the city and the region will benefit from just having that kind of exposure and being, playing a part in FIFA. So then to, to the other points, so the contract on Thursday, I mean, as has been mentioned, that's kind of where the rubber meets the road here. And what we are saying, we are willing to do related to the World Cup and related to what FIFA has asked of us and, you know, where, how far we're willing to go. And so, and both commissioners have mentioned this. And so I agree that, you know, the contract will spell out the details. And I just want to delineate what I think I understand you to have said related to the financial stack. So we've got a couple of costs that we know are outside the CIP and the master plan. Those are the pitch and removing the seats. Those are the two things we know. And you've got dollar amounts associated with that. The pitch is at 4 million or so, the, the corners are about 6 million. So that's what we know. And then we know that there may be other things that are asked for, things related to the, the suites or, you know, the scoreboard or other things. But what I have heard you say is that what we want to do is say to FIFA, we have a CIP that we've been, you know, we, we've seen that and the master plan that we will see. And we anticipate doing work on this stadium in the next four years leading up to 2026 when the games would be played. And so we have all, we already know that that's about $5 million or so per year to continue to make improvements to Paul Brown Stadium because that's what we do and that's what we've committed to do. And so some of the things that, the expectation is, some of the things that they may come with, like we need an improvement to some of the suites, is something that might be on our CIP or our master plan list anyway. And so I've heard you say, and I hope I'm characterizing this correctly, that what we want to say to FIFA is, anything that you ask for outside of the two knowns, right, the pitch and the corners, we want to make sure that those fold into our CIP and our master plan because those are things that we would be doing anyway and those are things that would be budgeted for. And so I think that makes sense. I mean, that makes fiscal sense. I too am concerned about representing the taxpayer here. But knowing that we spend 5 million a year, times four, right, leading up into the 2026 year, so that's 20 million. And I know there are other things that are part of the stadium improvements that are budgeted in. You know, we already have money set aside to do improvements to the stadium. So I think the idea is to make sure that those improvements that are identified by the county through the CIP and the master plan are relative to what FIFA would be asking us for. And writing something into a contract perhaps that would suggest that, right? That, that we are willing to do things that are kind of already on our list, right? And, and so we're not spending any additional money for what FIFA wants. We're simply saying, oh, yes, you've identified something that we also know is an improvement that needs to be made and, and we're willing to do that. And so I think that helps me get to a place where I'm much more comfortable saying that with the finances here and the money that we have available for continuously improving the stadium, that those two things are going to fold together. And, and that makes sense to me. So I hope I didn't mischaracterize it. That's my understanding of it.
So, Madam President, Commissioner Drury House, now I think you hit the nail on the head with all that. The only tweak that I would put on that was that in addition to the, the pitch and the corners, and you listed all these other things out, suites, concessions, lighting, scoreboard, sound systems, all of that kind of stuff. And we've said that to the degree, or that those improvements would be made within the context of the CIP, so all correct. I would just want to be clear that those are things that FIFA has also asked for. So it's not as much as that they might ask, but that they have asked for those and we have said, so for instance, suite upgrades, the suite upgrades will be made between now and 2026. It'll be made consistent with our master plan and our CIP though. That's, so that's the constraints that we put around it, yes.
Right, and so that makes sense. And I, you know, I, I know that we're, we're in a competitive situation here. And so, you know, I, I very much want the World Cup to come to Hamilton County. I mean, I think it would be an incredible asset to this community, both the economics and the exposure, as I mentioned before. And so I'm trying to get us to a yes where we are being prudent with our finances, but also saying, yeah, we want to try to go to a yes with this thing because it would be very exciting for this community to have this. And, and I also heard you say, and I'm gratified by this, that, you know, if there were to be some things that are outside the CIP or the master plan, and it's a stadium, like, it's not like we don't know what might be asked for. It's not like we haven't done studies around the country to know what other stadiums have that we don't. It's, it's not like these are unknowns to us because we've done a lot of studying of this kind of thing because of the negotiations with the Bengals. And so I don't feel like we're in completely foreign territory here because we do have some things that, you know, we're familiar with, we've studied it. And so if there are some things that are, are outside, unanticipated, that the business community has said that they will play a part here. And so I, I take some comfort in that. I know some of the, the fundraising or the, the money spent by the business community will be on things outside the stadium, like these, I, I don't really know what they all are, but it, it'll be things like a practice field or what, the, the training facility or whatever it is. But it's outside of our structure and that's fine. I mean, that's the role that they play. But in addition to that, they would be willing to perhaps, you know, put in a little bit here if we find that we're in a situation where we haven't anticipated something and, and we're, we're over. So those are all the things that I'm thinking about as we sort through the, the overall economic impact to the larger community. And, and in some ways, you know, I view this as an investment from the county. I mean, if we want to bring in $450 million of economic impact in a month's time into this community, there's an investment that we're being asked to make. And a lot of the investment we would already made or be making anyway. And some of it's on top of that, like this pitch and the seats. But that's something that we need to make a decision about. And then put that relative to the, the income we, literally, we get income from this and kind of measure these things. And so that's where I am on it. I'm leaning in favor of signing a contract that incorporates some of these things that have been mentioned today. And I know you're working on that. So I look forward to viewing the, the details that would get sorted out by Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. The webinar that we talked about on October the 21st, October 2021, I was a part of that and Jeff was a part of that with FIFA. And we talked a lot about their expectations. One of their expectations, not only with development, was diversity and how it impacts the community as it relates to jobs. And they looked at where we are, not only what TKQL stadium, but what we've done with the soccer program here as it relates to diversity. So they are very adamant about making sure that that happens. That's how we ended up being one of the finalists. Jeff, how many are left? Is it 12 or 16?
Madam President, I think it is 16 entities. I think it was initially 17, but I believe Baltimore and Washington DC have consolidated their bids. So I think it's technically down to 16 at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to say, we, we talk a lot about negotiation, but they really don't need to negotiate. That's why I asked about the number. It's, it's a little bit to do with supply and demand. You have one FIFA and you have 16 entities that, that want to be a part of it. So basically, they can talk to you and give you an agreement, which we did just get this over the weekend, this total agreement because we had been talking about, as Vice President Reese had mentioned, a bid package. And we never received that because I'm sure things have changed in between that process. But they really, I would, I can't speak for them and don't, and don't want to, don't need to negotiate because there's so many people that want what they have. And so the bottom line for me is on Thursday, if we are not in agreement with what they're asking for, what the agreement looks like, we say no. And if we say yes and they come back with something else and as it relates to more improvements, more money, we, we just say we're out. We, we're, we're not stuck. If they ask for more, we don't give them more, then they don't need us to stay in. So I, I'm just really concerned about making sure that we have an opportunity to read through this as much as we can. But I want to give, and I don't have to give our administrator any credit, but he's been talking about FIFA. We've been talking about FIFA for a long time. And we haven't had the specific details, I agree. But we've been talking about the possibility of whether or not this board wants to make the hard choices as relates to capital improvements and as relates to, to monies. And as you were saying, a lot of things are included in our CIP. You mentioned about the pitch, the corners, the grass was not planned. So we have some things that are planned, some things are unplanned. But how far do we want to go without hurting the county or the residents within it and to generate some revenue and also agree for Cincinnati to, to be the spotlight of this whole activity? So I'll be doing some more reading before Thursday. And we have the power to say yes or no. And we can move forward or we can stop on Thursday. So it'll be up to this board to, to make a decision. Yes.
I, I just want to say, I think this is probably our first time to have in public, to the public, to be able to get into the details of World Cup. I think we got into the announcement and that's, you know, fun, we loved it. I think where we are now is just getting into, I, I thought, to be honest, World Cup, when it comes, it would bring something that would be left behind that we can benefit from, like the Olympics. When they leave, they leave some kind of facility that you can keep making money off of. So this is, you know, new for me to understand that the World Cup comes in and it's not much that they leave that is permanent. You know, I would love for them to come in and leave a, and I've talked to this to, to Jeff, to leave something that we could keep making money off of, this community. I understand a legacy project, FC is doing a fabulous job already with that, doing the, the mini soccer fields into communities. They do a great job. But I'm talking about something that we could continue to make money off of. And so, you know, this process was a little bit different than I've experienced in other bids that I've been involved in, worked on and brought to fruition. I want to make sure we got clarity on something, at least for me. You, you all may understand it. I want to make sure I have clarity. In the contract, is it a standard contract where they say, this is what you got to do and you sign? And in there, it also says, there may be other things, because what I'm seeing in here, once we sign that, other things we are accountable for? Or is it like... Or is it like we get to put our own contract together? It'll be a Hamilton County contract between them and these things that we talked about today, because I don't want to talk about these things and they come back and say, you know what, it's a standard ass contract. You can't go in there and negotiate. So I want you to be clear on that because I know Commissioner Dreyhouse mentioned some things that, you know, it'd be great if we could do this. Are we able to, will it be a standard contract? Because this 257 pages looks like it's a standard contract. Or is it a contract that you and our attorneys put together between us and FIFA?
So the contract that, the stadium authority agreement that we would be executing or the board would be considering and authorizing on, on Thursday, is essentially the, a portion of the agreement that you have in, in front of you. So that, that agreement included the host, the host city agreement. It included the stadium authority agreement and then it included some attachments and some addenda that related to those attachments. So we are working with FIFA on some language modifications associated with the stadium authority agreement, but that is essentially the doc. So it would not be like our traditional purchasing contract or something like that.
Yeah, so there's no, we want to put this in, put that, you got 16 cities, they got basically here it is areas and we sign. Once we sign, this is important, and say they come back with some more stuff or business community say, hey, we, we, our money's going, because I've asked that, I said, why can't the business community money go toward the stadium and help us cut this cost down? They say, oh no, our money's going to go somewhere else. So if the money goes up, is there, is there any ability for you to put in the contract, we gonna spend up to this, like you're doing those other ones, up to this much, but you can't go over? Is that allowed in this or is that just a cookie cutter?
So the way we've tried to address that in this agreement is to indicate, here's what we're going to do, especially as it relates to the, the pitch and the corners. And then we know that there is a, a host of other things that they're looking for and have said that, that that would be done within the context of the master plan and of our capital improvement program. So, but to your question about if FIFA came back and said, our hosting requirements have changed, we want something entirely different, two things. Number one, the, the agreement with, and the stadium authority agreement does indicate in there that if that ask results in adverse financial hardship to the host community, that the host community would then notify FIFA and they would sit down and try to figure out a good faith way through that. So that's the mechanism in the agreement that, that addresses that. I would also say, those are the types of things where we've had some conversations with the business community as well about if there are things outside the scope of this and outside of what we would normally do in the stadium, that we would want to make sure those were part of fundraising efforts. So.
Yeah, because they had the word guaranteed in here and it doesn't seem like, I mean, I, I mean, I, you know, I understand business, but they say you guaranteeing something, it ain't going to be a whole lot of wiggle room once you sign on the dotted line. Can you get a separate agreement document with the host committee that anything above this, the private, whoever that host committee is, they would sign and say they would take it on? Can we do that? Is that possible? That we would have agreement with our host committee?
So.
Is anything above this that they would, I know they verbally telling you, but can we get something in writing? I know, I learned that from the Bengals, everything they got is in a MOU, an amendment and in writing. Can we get something like that?
So I think that's something we could talk about as we've, as we structure that special purpose entity, to figure out how we're going to all work together. Because I think on, on behalf of the folks who have been a part of this, I think the, the general idea has been trying to move towards something that the community would benefit from long-term. This is a, a significant, would be a significant milestone for the community, but recognizing that it's, that this is a big, this is a big event. Trying to figure out how we all work together towards getting to that and recognizing that there's going to have to be some partnerships. So if, if we have, if we're struggling in a certain area, to make sure that that, that the broader effort is able to step in and assist. So I would imagine as that special purpose entity is, is pulled together, that we would have the opportunity to discuss about when and where that would occur.
Yeah, there is a host committee already. From that memo that we got, I just think it'd be great. My thing is, I, I want to, you know, be supportive, but it's a lot of fine print in here. I mean, this thing got some fine print and you gave a little PowerPoint and I appreciate that. But this contract got a lot of whereas's, a lot of fine print, a lot of talizations, government guarantees. I just don't want to, because what happened is everybody is clapping, saying it's a wonderful thing and then when they leave, then the news will do a, a report on, we didn't bring in this much money, it cost the taxpayers that much money. And everybody say they gonna help, but I've never seen as much, you know, like, maybe they're truthful. Let's get it in a MOU and get it signed at the same time. And then that way, I think we're moving collectively, jointly and in the right direction. So that's what my concern was. I just got this, like I said, it's a lot in here, but I just think that we should have a cap and then that cap, I'm sure the business community wants to work with us, there's a MOU understanding at the same time to help fill the gap. And that way, when we make the announcement, if we move forward and we get it, we all know that we're moving financially sound, everything's covered and everybody knows transparently what it takes. But I don't want us to sign it and then get a bill and the people that's stuck is the taxpayers. That's what I, I'm concerned about. But, but again, the concept is great, it's just, we're just now down to, you know, it's just like business, we're down to the, the contract. And I'm hoping we can get the best that we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. So the process of reviewing the, the fine print, our lawyers are doing that as we speak? Is that what's going on?
Yes, Madam, Madam President, so our counsel, both internal and external counsel, continue to review this, in particular, again, from the perspective of looking to containerize the county's financial risk. That's the primary area that we're, that we're focused on and that is the subject of some current ongoing discussions, both with our local host organizing committee as well as with FIFA, which can be complicated by the fact that we are in a bit of a time delay, but nonetheless, we're, we are having active conversations there as well.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Yeah, and thank you for that clarity. I, that, that is the understanding that we're continuing to work with legal counsel to containerize, as you say, it's limit the liability of the county as we move forward. So I appreciate the work that our attorneys are doing, they're in the room, so thank you, gentlemen. One thing, so I thought there was a legacy project in here and I just want to be clear on this, because I, I see something, and again, I'm referencing the UC study, it talks about a legacy project for 5 million. So am I misreading this?
No, I, I think the, the legacy projects, I, I can't say exactly what they are right now, but I think that is something that is being incorporated into the fundraising efforts of the business community and the philanthropic community to, to build out some legacy projects related to sports and soccer in, in, in the community. What exactly they are, I can't, I can't speak to those at, at this point. I just, I simply don't know and I'm not sure if that, if those plans have even been completely formulated. But I know that they are, that it absolutely is within the, within the expectation of the, of the local organizing committee and of FIFA that those be brought, brought to the community.
Well, and I would say of this board. Because, you know, I, I mean, I certainly had the expectation that there would be legacy projects left behind after the game and it's delineated just a little bit at the impact of 5 million dollars in the, the study. So I just didn't want to point that out because I didn't want to be confused about whether or not that was included. Thank you.
And it says anticipate 35 to 50 million for Fan Fest, training facilities and legacy projects. Okay, alrighty. I will, if there's no further discussion, we'll be.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I just make a quick announcement? I just, I know we usually do it on Thursdays, but I just want to give people time to keep getting ready. And our board has been very active in pushing for jobs, our jobs out. And there's a job fair that Hamilton County is having for the jobs here in Hamilton County. It's going to be Wednesday, June 15th, 3:00 to 7:00 PM at Ohio Means Jobs. And I just want to probably announce that every meeting just so people can get ready and, and these, we're really looking for people to work, so come ready to, to get, to get hired. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
And Madam President, if I could just tack on real quick, I just want to thank all of the departments and, and elected offices. We have a lot of organizations in the county that are participating in that. We have a lot of jobs available right now, whether it's at Job and Family Services or the courts or, or Planning and Development, Environmental Services. So just would encourage folks to come out to the Ohio Mean Job Center on that date and, and there's, and we'll actually have the computer set up to be able to apply right there, get your names in. So, so it'd be a great opportunity for folks. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Since we're making announcements, the treasurer had implemented a mortgage relief program in June the 6th, which is next Monday, from 5:00 to 7:00. There will be some services and assistance for anyone who's interested in help with their mortgage on at the Cincinnati Public Library on Hamilton Avenue. Okay. With no further business to come before the board, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Thank you.